Good afternoon. This regular meeting Fairfield County Council is called to order. Do I have approval of agenda? It's been moved and properly second. Approval of the agenda. Next we have the invocation, Councilmember Gilbert.
Father God, we come before you in the precious name of the living Son Jesus Christ, giving you thanks and praises right now, Lord God. We ask right now, Lord God, as you look down upon us, that what we do tonight, Lord, be done decent and in order. We ask that, Lord, that you just bless us as we go about your county business. In this your Son Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Next we have the approval of minutes for regular meeting, February 11th, 2019. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's been approved, five to zero. I'd like to also let the record state that I spoke with Ms. Vice Chair Goins and Councilmember Trapp. Both of them are under the weather. I think Ms. Goins' husband is in the hospital still, so we're asking for prayers for her. There is no public presentations. Next down, first comment, first public comment session, Ms. Locklear, Ms. Davis.
We have two to speak tonight. First, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on Section 1237-135.
There goes the clock. County, I'm going to read to you what that section is so that the public knows what we're trying to get accomplished tonight. "County governing body may require a business registration throughout the entire county area and may impose an administrative fee not to exceed $15. The fee is an administrative fee and must not be based upon business income. The business registration authorized by this section must be administered and enforced in the same manner as the business license tax described in Section 4-9-3012, but must not be converted into a business license tax as described in that provision. The business registration administrative fee may be billed on any property tax bill and is deemed to be property tax for the purpose of collection. If so billed, this registration, if adopted, is in lieu of any business license which is authorized pursuant to Section 4.9, excuse me, .30." My first question is, whose bright idea was it to have this ordinance put on the books and make the taxpayers implement this? I'd like a name. Who thought of this? What do you expect to accomplish with a $15 fee from 50 or 100 or more people? And when someone asks a question, that should immediately foster a response from you, the elected officials. What's the purpose of this for us, the taxpayer? What positive benefit will we reap? Prove it to us. Show it to us in black and white, a bottom line, a result from this action. If there's nothing positive coming from this now or in the near future, why on earth are you adding burdens to the citizens on taxes? Think about that before you pass another useless ordinance fee. And why is this so damn important for us to get it on the books? And of course, I'd like to know ultimately where this will lead us? And what do you have up your sleeves that you're not telling us? Why isn't something like this put to a vote by the people? If you think this is such a great idea, then let the people vote on it. You ought to vote on ratifying and nullification to this code and move on. It is not, is it not more democratic an idea to hold a referendum on issues like this rather than let the county council alone make the decisions for us? This smells of the cat collar law you folks just passed. Once again, what's the purpose of this and who's going to benefit by it and how? Please prove that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on ordinance 717, 718, and 719.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. As a general rule, I'm not in favor of raising taxes. However, with a couple caveats, I find that this is imperative that we do certain investments to ensure that we get out of the hole and move this county forward. We've done some good things this past year, and we can only move forward without investing. The first, the first two ordinances, 17 and 18, have extreme importance in taking care of a couple of issues that we have in this county that are holding us back. Number one is blight. Blight is holding us back when, from getting new residents, new development, and new industry. Obviously, that's our front door. We don't have a front door entrance because it's full of blight. So let's make a good first impression and move forward. However, any tax increase and any money spent, and this kind of runs the theme with what Jeff just said, you've got to have a plan. Now, I know many of you, or several of you, were in the military, and many of you are familiar with SMART Plan, the acronym for SMART Plan. So we need specific plans of what's going to happen, what are your goals, and how are we going to accomplish it? And more importantly, how are you going to measure your accomplishment with this money being spent? Jason's already got a good idea of how much we're going to spend, or how much we're going to get on the hospitality tax. So what are, what are we going to budget it for? X amount of bulldozing, X amount of fixing, X amount of new code ordinance team members? How we, how are we going to spend this money specifically? And what are our goals? And how are we going to reach our goals? In other words, let's make this a prudent investment, not a blind investment. And in that same vein, let's augment this investment with, let's beef up our enforcement of codes. Obviously, we have a problem. Obviously, people have taken advantage of us. So what are we going to do to ensure that we don't increase the amount of blight while we're trying to address a blight? And that may be stiffer codes, stiffer enforcements, things like, all right, you got a code enforcement? You can't get a permit to build something else until you take care of your current problems. And, and on the last one, I, I have some reservations and want to be sure that 719, the $15 is no big deal, and quite frankly, I do understand it as administrative fee because you've got to know what businesses are here. You've got to know what, what you're managing. However, do not dare let this creep up to any, anything beyond $15. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Segment 1.
There is no public hearing. Next down to ordinance resolution and orders. First is by title only, ordinance number 717, an ordinance of the county council, Fairfield County, South Carolina, to establish a tourism development fee pursuant to Section 6-1-500 subsequent to South Carolina Code of Laws. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's approved five to zero. Next down to Item B, by title only, ordinance number 718, an ordinance of county council, ordinance of the county council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to establish a local hospitality tax pursuant to Section 6-1-700 subsequent of the South Carolina Code of Laws to apply to all establishments which sell prepared meals and beverages located in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County. There's no discussion on this one also. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's approved five to zero. Next is Item C, by title only, ordinance number 719, an ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to establish a county business registration program to apply to regulate businesses located in the unincorporated area of the county of Fairfield pursuant to Section 12-37-135 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. There's no discussion on this as well. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's been approved five to zero. Now down to board and commission minutes. We receive all justice information. Does any council member have any questions, concerns, or requests to it? Next down to board and commission appointments. First, we have disabilities and special needs boards. Ms. Marilyn Kenley of District 3. All those in favor? I'm sorry, do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's approved five to zero. Is Ms. Kenley in the house? No. Next down to council on aging, reappointment of Ms. Irene Carter, District 6. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. Ms. Carter be approved, council on aging, reappointment. All those in favor? It's approved five to zero. Next down to airport commission, appointment of Mr. Dwayne Bell, District 1. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's been approved five to zero. Appoint Mr. Bell. Ms. Bell in the house? Thank you, Ms. Bell. No old business, no new business. We have a proclamation of Black History Month. I'll take turn and read some of the, if Ms. Davis would help me out. Proclamation is proclaiming, "February is Black History Month, whereas Fairfield County desires to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans toward the, toward the furtherance of our culture, spiritual, and economic development. And whereas in September 1915, Harvard training historian Carter G. Woodson and prominent minister Jesse E. Moreland founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, ASNHL, which was dedicated to research and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other people of African descent. Today, the organization is known as the Association for, excuse me, Association for the Study of African American Life and History. This group sponsored a National Negro History Week in 1926, choosing the second week of February, which coincides with the birthday of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. This event inspired schools and communities to organize local celebrations. And whereas following the initial designation, excuse me, mayors of the cities across the country began using yearly proclamations recognizing Negro History Week. By late 1960, Black History Week had evolved into Black History Month in many colleges' campuses. In 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month, calling upon the public to seize the opportunity to honor the often too neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month with a specified theme for each year. The theme for 2019 is Black Migrations, with emphasis on the movement of people of African descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities."
And whereas Fairfield County seeks to recognize our homegrown prominent African Americans, such as, Davis, such as Sergeant First Class Webster Anderson, born in Winsboro, recipient of the Congressional Medal of Honor for his service in Vietnam, Mamie Peanut Johnson, born in Ridgeway, the first and only female to pitch baseball in the Negro Major League, Kelly Miller, born in Winsboro, the first Black mathematics graduate student, and Isaac Woodard, born in Winsboro, World War II veteran, whose 1946 beating sparked national outrage and galvanized the civil rights movement. These are but a few of the African Americans who have had a profound effect on our society as a whole, who preserved with courage, faith, and determination to build fruitful lives for themselves and their families while immeasurably contributing to those around them. And whereas Fairfield County Council fully recognizes the enormity of the significance of Black History Month for those listed and countless other African Americans who have made indelible contributions to mankind. The council wishes to publicly declare the month of February as Black History Month. You want me to finish it out?
Now therefore be it resolved that the people of Fairfield County do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month with the highest regard and esteem for African-Americans as examples of citizens and service at its best in the county. With that being said, do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? It's approved five to zero to approve February's Black History Month. Next down to county administrator's report, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, Council, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have Mr. Rudolph Walker, who are here to speak to council on the Fatherhood Coalition, the Midlands Fatherhood Coalition, which he runs, and this is an agency that council on a yearly basis, we do fund. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor Administrator, I appreciate you all having me here tonight. I want to thank Ms. Davis for squeezing me in. The reason I'm here this evening is just wanted to present to council the fatherhood's impact statement for 2018. And the, the work that we do, which is the reason I'm here tonight, could not be done if not for the support over the years and the continued support that the council has given us. Last year, we were able to take and serve 83 fathers in Fairfield County, 184 children that were positively impacted, $54,000 and some change was paid in child support, and through our ATI program, which is an alternative to incarceration. And what that is, is individuals that go to family court because of them not paying child support. Depending on the judgment of the judge, sometimes those fathers are mandated to my program. And in doing so, as opposed to them being, you know, sitting up on the hill and we paying for it, because of those individuals coming to my program, the impact that that has had was a savings of 100,000, $100,800 over 2018. And, and that's due in part, again, with the support that you all have continuously given us, allowed us to take and do the things that we do. So again, I just wanted to take and say thank you. We appreciate everything that you've done. In this impact statement, I must apologize, it was just a ruse for me to take and get in here tonight. What I wanted to do, you know, we always saying thank you, but what I wanted to do was present to the council a plaque and also a card that was signed by, by my fathers, my fathers, the young men in the program, to, to the council, and just to take and say thank you for all that you all have done. You can get up. They petted me down, I'm good.
Thank you.
Any council member had any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
Mr. Walker, I just want to say, you do a great job. You and your staff do a great job, and I appreciate what you do.
Alex, like I say, you know, I can't, and this is repetitive, but with the continued assistance, a lot that we do do without the assistance of the, of the council, we would not be able to, to provide. Like just recently, we, we had a father-daughter dance. Because a lot of times, a lot of these young men, either they can't or they don't think, you know, to do these things, not truly understanding how important just spending some quality time with their children is. So what we did was, we, we do this every year, a father-daughter dance. We provided all the fathers with suits, with the council's help, you know, the funding that you all provide for us. We also provided all the young ladies with, with gowns, you know, so, and they, they had an awesome time, you know, so, but, and this makes a total difference as far as the family is concerned, and with the overall work that we do, it also enhances Fairfield County. Appreciate it. I can go now.
I'll just make this quick, quick statement. I appreciate everything you do also. You know, when I was coming up, I was always told, anybody can be a dad, but everybody can't be a father. And it took me the longest to understand.
Difference.
It's a difference. So I appreciate you teaching the young fellows to be a father instead of being a dad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I only had one other item. It's an important item, but I just wanted to announce that we will be having our first Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, at 5:00 here at our offices.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. There is no clerk to council's report. Next is second public comment session, Ms. Davis.
We have four who wish to speak tonight. First, Ms. Roberta Gay, speaking on Monument in Jenkinsville.
I'm Roberta Gay of District 4. I stand before your county council on behalf of the Jenkinsville community in regards to the monument or being placed on the former Booker T. Martin property on 215 South. We must individually, most individually, we love and care for their community. There's no word to express how grateful the individual of this community would be to be honored, those who lived among us and went about doing good. This would be passed on from generation to generation. We, the Jenkinsville community, are asking that this proposal be placed in the budget for 2019. The names of the, the names that the community would like to be placed on the monument are as followers. Mr. Booker T. Martin, Mr. Henry Yarborough, Ms. Senobia Dixon, Mr. Maxwell Whittington, and Reverend Thomas Feaster. These are some of the visionaries of Jenkinsville, and we, the community, would like to show appreciation of their hard work for our, for our community. We would like to present you with two pictures of the monument and their names. To county councilmen, I appreciate you allowing me to speak to you tonight. Thank you for a listening ear.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on Vision.
I know you see me washing the clock, Mr. Taylor. All right. Good evening, Chairman Robertson, Vice Chair Goins in her absence, council members Administrator Taylor, and Deputy Administrator Anderson. A new year, a new council in 2019 is getting closer to council retreat and budget time. We, the citizens, are asking you to be visionaries, be creative, take the limits off your mind. Think progressive thoughts. To do something new must replace the old. I say to you, you are the architects and building contractors of Fairfield County. Use your thoughts as an architect uses a blueprint. I say to council, you have the power to support a teacher's village, short-range goal, monument to be placed on the purchased land on 215 with the specified names that you heard, short-range goal. Rail and Pier, built on Coltrussa Road, near Schaefer Ridge, short-range goal. It was mentioned to our councilwoman, but no action has been taken. Penicels tax for sewer water, for water and sewer, in what area? Is this only for the urban areas, Ridgeway and Winsboro? How does that help people in the rural areas? Long-range goal. Excuse me, the property tax we received from V.C. Summer Nuclear Power Plant, $33 million, leaves Western Fairfield. What don't those funds coming back, we don't see those funds coming back, to address community needs? For example, why can't $1 million be set aside for rehab housing program for senior citizens who in many cases can't pay water bill, house insurance, car insurance, nor property tax? If you haven't noticed, we have many dollar stores and financial lending institutions. We are still struggling for economic development and jobs. Some jobs are trickling down long-range goals. We are aware that council is saying Santa Claus is coming one day. At the last meeting, oh, I got to hurry up, I asked the status of the 8.12 acres of land from FART. What decision has been made by FART? I understand Duke Energy are putting $30 million in the Lake Watery area. It took only two years. I'll continue at the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on accountability.
I should give my time to Mrs. Workman. Finish up right now, but, okay. Just thought of me already. I didn't get my juices going. Good evening, elected officials. That has a certain ring of authority, doesn't it? Well, I have just three minutes to fix the world, so pay attention. I'd request that you listen and pay attention. You might hear something tonight that will light a fire under your seat. We, the people in the peanut gallery, elect you, the officials, for a validating purpose. President Harry Truman had a plaque on his desk, "The buck stops here." Who among you is ready to accept that plaque on your desk? Responsibility. We don't give the responsibility of watching over the chicken coop to the wolf. And talk is the cheapest version of an action. Back it up with results, and then when you speak, we will see something more than your lips moving. Problems, I'm going to list them for you. Water, sewers, infrastructure, education, high taxes, crime, employment opportunities, insufficient emergency services, race relations, a lack of high-speed internet. And that, my friends, is just the tip of the Fairfield iceberg. We look like a cesspool for future development. Anyone with half a business brain is not coming here. Why not? For the reasons I just mentioned. The one thing you folks can offer businesses is a tax break and time. And then, they pack up and leave us with an empty building. And that type of tax break is shoved down our throats with a $15 ordinance fee and a $5 auto road fee. Our overall taxes are higher than Hilton Head Island citizens. You try explaining your way out of that one. And I'm not exaggerating, that's a reality. You can't measure tax breaks and businesses leaving the area as success doesn't add up. And finally, I want to thank you for getting us a quality healthcare hospital. How many years and millions of taxpayer dollars did it take to provide that necessity? It took too many. Because there's something in it for certain people that made it more important than for all of us. Morality, integrity, character, courage, commitment to honesty? These are not curse words. That's all we ask from the elected officials. Now, tell us when we can expect this council in the future and spare us. We can't mention it because we're afraid to scare them away. Save that rhetoric for another time and just say who and what you're planning for the benefit or benefit- say who and what you're planning for the benefit or benefiting life here in the county, and tell us publicly, who is joining the Water Association and who's playing games with our health and the future development of the county? The elections are over, and now it's time to do what you were elected to do, and when you have council time, we'd like to hear your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on Doctor Doctor.
She's coming back, folks, just give her a minute. Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One, Fairfield County. First, just a very quick rhetorical question, but we're gonna need an answer to it at some point. Have you factored in those who live in Fairfield County that have businesses outside of the county, maybe even outside of the state, as far as the registration, just throwing that out there for process? Next, $750,000 annually is a lot of money, you can do a lot with, and thanks to great work by the council, Fairfield Memorial Hospital and Providence, that's how much we're saving, and I can go over those numbers again, but I don't have the time, that's how much we're saving annually in the hospital deal, and that's great. However, it's, we can do more. What can we, what could we do with that $750,000 to put towards our medical situation, which is still not in good shape in this county? Abesity rates are high, mortality rates are high, and other issues, as you know. I was talking to my friend Ron Smith about it, and he had a good thought, perhaps we can do something to recruit more doctors. What's a higher ratio than 2,200 to 1? Well, 3,700 to 1 is a higher ratio, and those respectively are ratios of primary doctors and dentists to the population. What can we do to recruit and retain doctors in this county? As you know, our key doctors are not getting any younger, and we've got to do a job of recruiting people to, to come to our county, and, you know, I suggest that you talk to the key doctors and ask them what their thoughts are. Another possibility is maybe partner with Providence for a mobile diagnostic center to come once, twice, three, four times a month to various parts of our county. But we saved this amount for our medical situation, improved our medical situation, yet that savings should be put back into the imperative of improving the healthcare of this county, at least a good part of it. And again, I'd start with asking the doctors, how could that money be best spent? Don't take my word for it, take the experts' word for it. Little bit time to spare, but I can't give it to you, Jackie, so, thank you. One last thing, the father group is just marvelous, and every time we get, we get the presentation, I'm inspired by the work that they do, so thanks for supporting them, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes segment two.
Now down to county council time, would any council member like to be recognized? Mr. Douglas, yes?
Anytime I have a need to go into another councilman's district, I will be sure to contact them to ask and explain why I need to. I expect the same courtesy. My district runs all the way from Mitford to the other end of Lake Watery, except for a small piece on Coral Creek. Being a council member, I have learned to listen to what citizens and council members have to say at our meetings. I even listen to the preacher in church now, I guess because of my age. The main point is, if everyone listened to what is said, a lot of unnecessary questions could be deleted. Our statements made where information is available has already been answered. We have, one speaker forgot about water and sewer that we need the money for on these extra charges.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Bell, go ahead, sir.
One of the things I want to do is, my aunt, on February 21st, was 102 years old, just want to acknowledge that, that's significant. But the next thing is, if anyone looked at the paper on last, on last week, there was an article, says Duke Energy to spend millions on, on Lake Watery. With that, I like to recognize Shirley Green. For most of you may know, she's, she did a lot of work, and she was the contact for the people from Duke Energy to, to make sure, especially during the planning process, they talked to her, and so she was a great inspiration to, to Duke Energy spending that money. Again, she was probably one of the contacts, if not the primary contact. And again, she, she worked with people like Mark Oakley, John Crutching, all of those persons, to make sure that we get some of that money and get some of those improvements for those projects at Lake Watery. Again, just want to recognize Shirley for her service and commitment, again, to service for Fairfield County. And again, she did all this work as a citizen. And the next thing is, as I think about it, I know most of you have probably seen the Fairfield Post. This is a newspaper in collaboration with Fairfield, Fairfield Central High School, the Barclay School, and Richard Wayne Academy. For those who don't get this paper, the paper's free, and please take a time to look at, it's a really good paper, and it's done by the students of those schools, so that's a good deal. And I think that speaks well for our county and our schools. And the next thing is, is I have a book here, it's called Maria's World. If you see this book, it's, it's written by Ayesha McMillan, okay? It's written in Spanish, and it's also written in English. Okay, we, they're working to try to get this book in the libraries in Fairfield County. Now, what makes this so significant is, is they're, Bernard is a constituent of District One, he's there on Highway 21. So again, it's Maria's World, and you can, you can go on, on Amazon and other places to get this book. And again, it's, it's a really good children's book, and it's written by Ayesha from Ridgeway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell, Mr. Doug.
I want to comment about the business license proposal. First to say, it is not about making money. We are going to start out with a low fee for our in-county businesses, and we need to keep it that way. A big part of the business license is to get an accounting of all the businesses in the county, because as of today, we don't even know what all businesses are in the county. This information can greatly help us market ourselves, market our businesses, and help them. And it can also come into consideration for grants and other opportunities for assistance. I also want to also address outside businesses coming into the county and making money and then taking it home with them, not benefiting our citizens. I'm talking about transit businesses, like food trucks, for example. They come in, take business away from our homegrown brick and mortar businesses, and don't have to pay or contribute anything to do so. This is not fair to our local business that operate here on a daily basis. Have a permanent storefront or location and contribute to our local economy. I think we need to look at some ways to require permitting transit businesses to be able to come in and operate. And for them, I think fees should be more substantial. We shouldn't just sit back and allow businesses with no long-term presence here to come in and farm and then take home their crop without contributing to our local community like our permanent businesses do. We need to level the playing field on this. I would like to see if staff could bring forward some proposals to address this, or potentially have an ad hoc committee of council members put together to come up with some solutions and ideas on how to address this problem, because it is a problem for our local businesses, and we need to support them in every way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paula. Any other council member?
I'd just like to piggyback off of Mr. Paula, it's definitely a fee that we need, that fee is no different from any other county that has ANH and fees as such in place. As he stated, we don't even have account of businesses we've got going on now. And in turn, that would attack, it would help with the blight. Blight is a big issue in this county. Another thing I want to comment on, the gentleman said we have insufficient services, I totally disagree with that. Our EMS services is top-notch, our law enforcement services are top-notch. Myself and Mr. Paula come from that area, and you best believe that they are trained well to assist citizens, and they get there as quick as they can. Sometimes, but you have to remember, we're in a rural county. Sometimes things happen, so, just like I said before, take that in consideration, but I totally agree with the insufficient part. Mr. Taylor, are you able to elaborate on the Duke Power?
With the parks that they're looking to put in?
Yes, sir. Are you able to elaborate on that, or?
Certainly.
Okay.
They're looking at several different parks to expand. What happens whether it's SCNG or Dominion now, or Duke Energy, when they do a hydroelectric lake like we have with Lake Watery or at Monticello, they have to pass a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission licensing periodically. FERC is what it's commonly referred to, I think Ms. Workman mentioned it earlier. In order to qualify for that, they have to do things, they have to give back to the public. And one of the things that they typically have to do is recreation. When they have a large lake like Monticello or Watery, what FERC does as part of their licensing requirements is tell them that you have to provide a certain amount of recreation on your lake, and that's what they're doing here. Duke has to do this. Duke is required to build these parks in order to get their license renewed, and they're required to maintain these parks. I will say that Duke has reached out to us, they have asked us to partner with them. I will say that partnering tends to be us taking over all future maintenance and operation of those parks, which is actually a quite hefty burden on the county. And for the most part, again, Duke is required to do these parks, they're required to maintain these parks, but I don't know that we really want to take over the future maintenance of them, because parks will occur whether we do that or not.
So county council wouldn't be the holdup?
We would not be a holdup at all.
Any other council member has anything?
All right. Now we'll be down to executive session. Subject to executive session, council may take action on matters discussed in executive session. We have a, A, we have a legal matter updated on litigation against SCAN, SCNG, in reference to the abandoned VC Summer Nuclear Plant. Also, we have a legal matter discussing regarding pending litigation claim and receipt of attorney-client privileged information, advice. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded, all of those in favor? Approve 5-0, will be in executive session at 6:44.